I got Paul fix this thing. He still keep knocking into it. Need a handyman. You got six? Welcome, everyone. We're gonna call the meeting to order, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we want to welcome all of you here tonight. My name is Barb Fish. I am the council president. And due to the resignation of our mayor, I will be running our meetings until we make our mayor appointment in April. If any of you are interested in applying for mayor, there is a form that is an expression of interest that can be acquired down at City Hall. And then there will be, I think those have to be turned in by March 26th. And then there will be, kind of like, an interview process with the council and the decision made on April 5th. So if you have any interest, please don't hesitate to reach out on that. We're gonna have a good meeting tonight. We're doing, we're having a promotion of an officer, which is really exciting. And we're happy about that, a local boy. And so, we're excited to have that. And we're happy to have all of you here. I'm guessing a lot of you are here for public comments. And we will get to that in just a bit, and I will explain what our process will be for that. Also, I want to thank you all for wearing your masks. I know it's really hard to social distance in this situation. So, thank you very much for wearing masks. I have elderly parents. I have two grandsons, and I appreciate your doing that for them. So, let's move on to the agenda. Christina, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Alright, we have a quorum. Do we have a motion on the agenda?
Mayor, I'd actually like to make a motion that we move that promotion under C2 up to our first item of new business.
Under, after, before the committee reports?
Yes, after old business.
Okay, super, okay. Is there a second on that?
No second, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda, get that promotion thing going. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Alright, agenda's approved, and now I need approval for the three sets of minutes, February 11th, February 16th, and February 18th, please.
Moved and approved.
Second.
Moved and second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Alright, claims, any question on claims, council members? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Moved and approved, for a second.
Moved and seconded to approve the claims? Do we have the claims up there? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Alright, now we're moving to the consent calendar. Some of you may not have been here before, so we'll try to make this as painless as possible for you. But the consent calendar is something that we really don't discuss. These are plats of land. They've been reviewed by our city engineer, Tammy Janzma, and they've gone before planning and zoning, and they're making a recommendation that we consent to doing these plats. And so, I just need a motion on that.
One move.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second on the consent calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, now, I'm gonna get to the part where I think probably a lot of you are interested in being involved. And the way we're gonna do this is, public and timed items are where the residents can come and address any concerns or questions that they have to the council. It can really be on anything. Oftentimes, it's on agenda items. And if you have a question or concern on an agenda item, this is the time to do it. There will not be time later in the meeting to address those issues. So, what we ask you to do is come forward, state your name and your address for the public record, and speak into the microphone. And Chuck is up there, and he knows how to run that microphone, so we'll ask him to do that for us. This is a public meeting, and so it will be recorded, and it will be something that children and grandchildren could listen to down the road. And I'm gonna make this really clear right now. We are not here to talk about disbanding the police department. Let me be very clear about that. It's coming down later on the agenda item, and we're talking about posing a question. So, I think, there's been a lot of discussion in social media, a lot of it not factual, unfortunately, and that's really too bad and disappointing, and I'm sorry, it's caused heartbreak and concern for a lot of people. That is not our intent, never was our intent. So, we look at a lot of things at City Council. You remember the whole controversy with the sewer lagoons? We had to do something with those dumb things. They were stinky, we all know that, right? We've, we've put the golf course through a lot of studies, right, Andrew? We've studied the golf course numerous times. So, we have to ask questions, that's our job. You may not always agree with that, but unfortunately, I don't think we're doing our due diligence. Now, that's me speaking, because I get to be the boss tonight. So, that's just me speaking, that may not be what the council thinks. But I just wanted to make it clear that we're not here talking about getting rid of our excellent police department. That is not the case. Now, what I'd like to do is, I know there are other people here that want to talk about some things and address us that aren't related to the police department, and I'd like to ask you to be gracious and let them go first, so then we can keep all of the police stuff together in one bucket. You have a five-minute limit. We have a 45-minute limit in our ordinance, so if we get to that point, Christina will let me know, and we will cut off comment, because we've gotta, we've gotta keep moving on these things. And a lot of times, we're just repeating ourselves. Now, the other thing about public comment is, we cannot take action on what is said. We can ask questions, we can ask for clarification, but because of the public meeting rules, what we deal with on our agenda has to be published 24 hours in advance. So, we cannot take action because we have not given you 24 hours of notice. So, that's just the way it goes. So, if there's something that needs to be dealt with, we would have to deal with it at a future meeting. Alright? So, after the comments are all done, then we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. So, how I'm gonna handle it is, I'm gonna ask for people that are not dealing with the police to come forward first, and then when, when that seems like everybody's done, then we'll move forward, and you can just take your turn at the lectern for any discussion on the police. So, I know that Chuck and Yannick are here, and you can, I know they're here for something else.
Hi, my name is Yannick LaRush. I live at 101 South Main Avenue, apartment 701 in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. But today, I'm here as production manager from Marmon Energy Wind Tower Manufacturer located in the Corson Industrial Park. I'm here to talk about the proposal of repairing the railroad crossing that is located at the entrance of the industrial park, which is on M-Loch Road, just after the intersection of Split Rock. This railroad crossing has been bad for years and is getting worse. Bad like my car is transformed into a message chair each time that I go over it, bad. There's currently a proposal to repair it. Me and all 260 team members at Marmon are very excited about it getting repaired. There was some concern that if it is getting repaired, only one lane will be available to use for both directions for about a month, or even maybe longer. And it would be, it would hinder our business or other business in the industrial park. Let me reassure you, this will be a very small hindrance compared to the current situation. The one lane will not affect our business or delivery, the tower section being shipped, or team members coming and going from work in a significant matter. I also talked to other businesses in the park, and we all agree about it. Repairing the current situation is important. This is the first thing that employee, visitor, or customers, or future investor in the industrial park feel when they are coming for the first time. Repairing it, even if it takes months, is totally worth it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chuck Parsons, 600 North Yellowstone Drive, Brandon. I'm the current chair for the Brandon Development Foundation, and that's who I'm representing tonight. Regarding your agenda, it's under E2. We would just urge you to accept this bid that Tammy's put together. Remind everybody that we've been trying for at least two years to get comparable bids in the Development Foundation, and we, we never could. So, this is a really good bid. I believe it's already approved in your budget. And then I would remind you that between the Development Foundation and another outside entity, we've raised $40,000 to assist you with this project. So, we would urge you to approve it tonight. Thank you.
Sorry. Perry Schnikloth, 808 Heatherwood Drive. I'm here in support of the Brandon Valley Hockey Association, more so the Aspen Park advert, approvals for the road and utility bids. As the hockey association, we are really excited for this project to happen that helps us get our feet moving faster, securing our funding that we need to do. We're working with DGR for a site prep plan, and we're working with Gilhoughen as far as buildings and bids, so we can move forward as an association to build that indoor building that's been talked about for many years. So, we just encourage you guys to approve the necessary approvals for continuing with the improvements at Aspen Park for the new utilities and the road heading south, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address something other than police? Did you have something?
Yeah, I got a question.
Okay, okay.
I got a question for you, sir.
Jeff?
Got a question for you.
Yep.
I know the, the plan is to use, is to close it down to one lane.
Yep.
I have been a proponent of closing it completely throughout the day, daylight hours. Do you feel the, the one lane is better?
The one lane would be better than completely, not only for safety, but also, we do have delivery and people coming in and out of the industrial park. So, I think, you know, one lane would, like, you would have to see and wait to cross would, would function for us, definitely.
Okay. And your, your trucks wouldn't have any issue navigating through that?
Nope, we, we had the talk with Tammy, and it's, it's large enough, and we wouldn't have any problem with it.
Okay, very good. Sounds like a decent compromise then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, council, for those? Okay, whoever would like to come up and speak, we're here to listen. It's always tough to be the first one, I know.
I'll be first, I have a Girl Scout thing in a little bit, so I gotta leave anyway.
You're brave, appreciate that.
My name is Tanya Riles. I live at 101 East Glenwood Drive. I'm a little nervous, so you'll have to take that into consideration. I've lived in Brandon since 2003, and I don't know what's all on the table, but I am concerned. I'm a Girl Scout leader, as you can see by my mask, anybody want cookies? I'm also an RN that fights for all of you to help with COVID. I'm also special needs mom. I'm also volunteer at a lot of the churches and events. What I want to talk to you about is, one of the reasons I moved here is because we had a strong police force. People said, "You can't go through Brandon, you'll get a speeding ticket." Love that. That's where I want to raise my kids, right? Who wants their kids in trouble? None of us, right? Why do if they're being naughty? Yes, I do. So, I'm gonna tell you a little story. One time, I ran to the grocery store while my kid was at Taekwondo, at Circus Fitness, used to be called Hoover's. My son was supposed to stay there, not go away. Well, Mom went to the grocery store and came back. I was two minutes too late. He thought he'd walk home. I do not remember how old he is, or he was at the time, he was small, probably six, seven years old. My son walked home. We called 911, and the Brandon Police Department came and looked for him. The residents, the police officers who were, who were already off, working for today, got in their cars and came to look for my son. You will not get that if we do anything else and have our own police department here. My son was found, he was okay, I'm very grateful. One of the nice gentlemen had a long talk with him, and that was wonderful. How many of you have parents that are older, that might have dementia, grandkids, other kids, great neighbor friends? This is what I'm concerned about, if we would transition to something else. The other thing I have concern about is mental health. I have a good friend of mine who works, works for Southeastern Behavioral Health. You asked any of these police officers here, they know who have mental health issues. They know who they need to check on and how to take care of them. We will not have that same treatment if we join in or do something with the Minnehaha County. We, do any of you know about the little boy who runs around in his underwear because he has mental health issues? I do. You know what? The cops do. And that's okay, because they know how to treat him, they know where he lives, and they know where he needs to go. And that's probably why we have no big deal about it. Money, if it's a money thing, which I'm not sure why we're all doing this, that's one thing my husband asked me, and I'm like, "I don't know, I'm too busy to figure this out right now." You know what? My water prices go up all the time, that's always a topic over here. You know what? I can pay $25 more a month if I know that would help. Just letting you know. The other thing I would like us to consider is if we do decide to move into something with Minnehaha County, as you can see, we all have an opinion on this, instead of it moving just through City Council, could we have a city vote on it? I think that that is something that we could do, you could all have our input then, instead of just a few people thinking about it. Personally, I would like to thank the Brandon Police Department for everything you've done. I've still heard that we have a strict police department here. I'm not sure if it's this young man over here who's getting advanced tonight, but he's the one who buys Girl Scout cookies for my girls all the time. I do have another daughter who has some anxiety issues, and I got stopped by a cop one time, and the police officer actually let me stop, calm her down, before he wrote me my well-deserved ticket. But it was very polite and nice of him, and I can't imagine moving anywhere else, and I can't imagine not having that much support here in, in Brandon. Thank you. And now, off to my Girl Scout thing.
Alright, alright. Sell those cookies. Who else would like to speak?
Hello. I am Angela Riedel, 129 South 7th Avenue. First of all, I want to say we appreciate our officers very much, especially people like me who live along 7th by the high school. We have about 40 kids that park along there, and if we didn't have our police officers there, patrolling before and after school, we would have so many more issues than what we already do. And that's one of my issues with, if we were to ever transition to the county, is our safety of our children. Our school zone, if you ever drive through the school zone between Brandon Elementary to the high school before or after school, it's bumper-to-bumper traffic. I work along there too, so I see it every day. We just had a child hit last week or the week before trying to cross the street. And that's my biggest worry, is not having our police officers out there, watching the traffic, watching these kids, and making sure that they're safe. You know, Brandon is growing, obviously, we've added, we've been here 15 years, and we've added, I don't know how many schools we've added since then, we're adding another elementary school, and we're gonna continue to grow. And another thing too, is I love our SRO, that we have the SRO at the high school. The kids there respect him, they look up to him. I think that would be a program, if we lost our officer there, that would be detrimental to our high school. And just, if you look at the police report lately, I think the last week's police report was a third to a half a page on our, in our paper. That's with our officers that are here 24/7. If we lost that 24/7, I can't imagine how detrimental that would be to our society and the break-ins that we've had lately. So, yeah, for me, is, the biggest thing at my school, is the school's own safety and our children. So, thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Carol Nelson, 216 South Yellowstone. I've been a resident of Brandon for 40 years, and one thing I've always enjoyed about Brandon is the police force and its presence wherever you are. It's vital that they stay in the high school, I think that's been very beneficial. I'm thinking of one incident where I called them just to get my kid out of bed so he'd go to school. Now, you're not gonna find that just anywhere, and they did that, and they told me, "We'll test him." And I'm like, "Okay, if he's positive, we're hauling him off." I'm like, "Okay." You know? I was at my wit's end, and I had a place I could go to, to help me. And you, you just don't get that anywhere. I work in a public area, I've had to call them for assistance when, when I have been met with objections to my trying to assist them. And Officer Henning was there this last year for me. One of my major concerns is, is the intersection on Split Rock and I-90 and the traffic, and I mean, if we just, if we cut down, we need our police for the mornings, at the very least, to try and control that cluster until we're able to, to take care of it. We're growing by leaps and bounds, and now is not the time to downscale on our police force. We need to, if anything, probably up it. And that's just my opinions, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, please?
Hello, everyone. I'm Ellison Katura, I'm a business owner, 509 North Split Rock Boulevard. And from the sounds of it, we're jumping the gun on the police force questions and comments, but I figured since I'm here, I might as well. I understand partially where the council is coming from and posing the question, I understand the budget issues and the money that's going on with Brandon, and the conversations about what needs to be approved, and, and the, the list in which, or I should say, the importance at which all these things are coming up. And I know that you all agree, or at least I feel like you all agree, that the police department is a very important thing. I know some of the council members are business owners, such as myself. And I could tell you, like, when we first built our building, we were having issues with the apartments behind our building, with kids coming over and just kind of being nosy and snoopy, and wanting to check out the construction site, and you know, nothing you can't handle, but several times, the police department would just drive by our building, just to show their presence there. We didn't have to call them, we didn't have to ask them, it was something that they did, just to be like, "Hey, if the kids see us here, they're gonna leave your stuff alone." And so, for that, I'm very grateful for our police department. I've had to call the police and deal with contractors on my property, and, you know, Officer McCoravy was here at the time, and he was amazing in the way he handled it, and the other officers handled the whole situation. You know, as business owners, if somebody is breaking into our property, and it's a day where the sheriff is in Hartford, you know, and someone's holding up one of my employees at gunpoint, or there's, you know, an issue like that, it's gonna take them 45 minutes to get to us. I know, because I live in Eros, out by Eros, and I've had the police call, or the sheriff called out to my house, it took them 45 minutes to respond. So, you know, if, if Brandon was a city that was getting smaller, or not growing, or could be clumped into Sioux Falls, then I'd probably be a little bit more for it. But we try so hard as a community to separate ourselves from Sioux Falls, I think lumping us in with the sheriff, and then potentially being lumped in with their police force helping us out, I just think that's gonna send us going backwards in what we're trying to do and grow as a community. And Brandon really needs those resources here, as you can heard from other people, our schools need it, our kids need it. My kids love seeing the officers, you know, parked at the church, or by the high school, by the water tower, you know, they know that the cops are there, and they know our police officers are friendly. A lot of the police officers come into our coffee shop for coffee in the morning, so they've met them. They know that these are good guys, and if we switch over to the sheriff's department, we're not gonna get that relationship with them. And as the first woman said, you know, these officers know our community, and I just think it'd be a really bad choice if we choose to go with the sheriff's department, so. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thanks for coming. Other comments?
Good evening, my name is Paul Jenkins, I live at 413 Dogwood. I also, as well as it seems like everybody here thinks it would be a bad idea to get rid of the police department, they are vital to the upkeep and safety of a community. My wife and family and I moved up here from Mississippi, where we lived in a, an offshoot town, if you will, and there were a couple occasions where we needed to have the police, or law enforcement more so, come to our place due to, one was a drunk driver that took out our mailbox and the car crossed the street. Apparently, later on, the same guy just stopped in the middle of the street and just passed out behind his car, or behind the wheel of his car. And we called the police, and it took them, I think the first time it was 45 minutes, and the second time it was over an hour before they got to our house. Now, that wasn't necessarily life-threatening as a, a holdup or something like that, but then we moved here, and we've had, my daughter was involved in a situation that was readily handled by the police when it came to their attention within the day. Without getting into too much detail, it was completely resolved. And since that incident took place literally around the corner from my house, it makes me nervous when, when my child has to go to the bus stop. Now, seeing where I live is two blocks from the police department, and a block and a half from where the incident took place, I have the opportunity, because I smoke, I smoke out in my front yard, I see the police drive down my street all day long, and at least 60% of the time, they turn, and they turn, and they drive right past the house in question. Now, I don't know that they're there to check on that situation, but it sure makes me feel better knowing that they drive by his house, hoping that he notices as well. And that's, that's a safety and a security that I have for my family, for my daughter, and I, I can't help but feel that they have the backs of everybody in this town. And I think it would be a very bad idea to not have that force at the citizens' request. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Others?
Hello. Crystal Westbrook, 405 Dogwood. Lived in Brandon now for about 11 years, rented the entire time, just bought a house two blocks from here. Have small kids, obviously, one of the reasons was safety, I wanted to live in Brandon, I knew I wanted to stay in Brandon. Like I said, I lived here for 11 years. Half of that time, I spent working for emergency services. Lot of calls ran. I think we need to seriously talk about response times. There would be a huge lag, and I, and I'm speaking from experience, I've ran 911 calls here in the town, I've ran 911 calls out in the county, ran them in Hartford, Garrettson, ran them all over the place. Brandon PD was always first on scene, always first on scene. I can't tell you how many times we had to wait for a sheriff to come for situations where we weren't allowed to enter first. So, we had to wait for police to be there. There'd be times we'd be waiting 20 minutes in an emergent situation. Could you imagine what it'd be if there was an emergency behind it, where if somebody just needed to get their kid out of bed, you know? How long would they wait? You know, and I'm not, I'm not trying to make light of it, because it's very serious. You know, I couldn't even imagine the number of calls that I've ran, that if the police weren't there, how they would have turned out, if I would have had to waited, if we as a team would have had to have waited any longer, how it would have turned out. And I just wanted to speak on that, because I feel like that's a huge thing we need to look at.
Oh, okay.
Very concerning to me, because, because of my experience, so, just wanted to voice that.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Yeah.
Crystal, what do you do again?
So, I was working for emergency services. Now, I do surgery billing. I worked for MedStar for seven years.
For MedStar?
Yeah. Yep, and I was there in the time when they were transitioning to the county where we were posted halfway between here and Hartford. So, I can speak on the emergency side of response times in that aspect, too, and how it correlated, you know, to the ambulance and then, you know, extrapolate that then to the police, how that's going to work out.
So, just a quick follow-up.
Yeah.
Did I understand you correctly that in certain situations, as an emergency ambulance person, that you couldn't go on the scene if the police weren't there? Is that correct?
In certain situations, yes. If there are suicidal subjects, absolutely, we were not allowed to go in there. If there were car accidents involving certain materials that were hazardous, we have to wait for professionals. You know, I mean, there's just things that we weren't able to do, especially for situations outside of our control.
Okay, is that a call that you guys have to make if you're the first on the scene, apparently?
No, absolutely not. No, that is a metro communications deal. They tell us that we need to wait for the police.
Okay. So, there's got to be some sort of evidence that, you know, is a suicidal or there's, you know, a safety issue for yourselves involved here, correct?
Correct, yeah. And that, of course, wasn't all of our calls.
Right.
But there was times where we needed police to back us up, to be there, you know, because there was somebody who we had to deal with over here, but there was somebody over here also, you know, that was causing an issue and that if the police weren't there, I can tell you, 100%, the situation would have not turned out properly or correctly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Crystal.
Henry Dean, 405th Avenue in Brandon. I've lived here for roughly about 40 years now and I've always enjoyed seeing the police around the community. I think one thing you'd have to take into consideration, if the sheriff's department would even be interested in taking on Brandon, they would have to hire 10 or 15 new officers to replace the ones we have, to provide us with adequate police protection. I think that's, and the response time. I think them are two things you'd have to really consider before anything else. But anyway, that's all I got to say.
I am sorry. I just had a question. If, I know that this is all talk, but if this does happen, what would happen to our current officers? Is that something that could, could you maybe, is that something you'll address later? But is it? Okay. I just wanted to know if that, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? So, we're going to move on. Anyone else? One one? One two?
Robert Nelson, 312 Kirkwood Boulevard, excuse me, 312 West Birchwood. I've lived in Brandon since 1992 when I moved here from Yankton. And when I heard about this proposal, I seriously thought, "Is this April 1st or what's going It seems to me that law enforcement is one of the basic public services that a city needs to provide, whether it's higher than water and sewer, garbage, whether it's lower, doesn't matter, but it's one of the basic ones that they need to provide. And I'm an attorney. I work in Sioux Falls. I can't even get deputy sheriffs to serve civil process for me. They're that busy. And if they're that busy where they can't do civil process, which pays them, how are they going to do criminal work? Criminal investigation, criminal calls? I've talked to a deputy that was involved with Minniamah County and actually did contract coverage service, like I anticipate we're talking about here. He said, you know, he might get spread between three different towns in one night. He'd be over in Hartford from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., drive from there up to Corson, be there for a couple hours and then go from there over to Dell's. If a call happened way back in Hartford when he was already up in Dell's, guess how long it takes him to get back there? It would seem to me that we have a perfect crucible to look at, to see what happens when you defund or eliminate police departments, and that's East Minneapolis-St. Paul. They cut 100 and some million dollars, 100 and some officers left or were let go. All of the violent-type crimes, carjackings, murders, assaults, all double-digit increases since that happened. And now recently, if you follow the news, they're out spending over $200 million trying to recruit new law officers and build back their law enforcement department. It's something that does not make sense. Thank you.
Okay, is that about five minutes left? Seven? Oh, is it seven? All right, does anybody else have anything?
Hi. I'm Andy A. Strike with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society, and I just come here tonight to say what a wonderful job that Brandon Police Department does to help with the animals. Typically, they try to handle some of those themselves before they would call us in, but they're absolutely fantastic to work with. Wonderful team of guys over here. And just wanted to come here and tell you that today. Again, they, a lot of times, will try to, you know, handle the animal problems without having us come over, just because they know their people, they know the pets in town, and they do a wonderful job. That's it.
Yeah, unfortunately, they know my cat, P. Been at the food park a couple of times.
Well, I had prior, TJ Cameron from Daybreak Circle, prior obligations this evening, so I'm super glad that we're still on public comment. And I'm sure that much was already said, but I'm here to express my support for the Brandon Police Department. I think that we would be regressing as a small community should we consider defunding or using the Minniamah County Sheriff's Department. Now, nothing against the Sheriff's Department, but we are a growing city and we're known for our safety and we even had a little bit of a reputation at one time for how great our police were that you couldn't speed through Brandon. And I don't think that that's a bad thing. You know, I think that to have that kind of coverage says that we've got the right thing, especially with our youth and everybody within the community. Just in the newspaper the other day, we caught the car hoppers that were coming through town, which I think is a pretty awesome feat because I'm sure that they often come from other cities if they seem like an easy target. And I can tell you, from growing up in Brookings, there was many small communities around that were serviced by a great county sheriff's department up in Brookings. However, I know from personal experience that their response times were quite, you know, quite a bit slower than Brookings per se, which had a great police department as well. And I think we're in a similar situation to Brookings growing from when I was growing up there, when that community was around 12,000 to 15,000 people, and we're approaching that point here in Brandon. So, I just think that I'd like to express my support. And I think that from what I can see here this evening, it's got to be close to a record crowd and it's pretty difficult to get people to come down to the council meetings to express their opinion. And to see that we are in 38 minutes of public comment and I was still able to say something, I think that says a lot and speaks a lot for the way the community feels.
I know it's not the easiest thing to do, especially with the press here, so, anyone
Good evening. Paul Vanderlinde, 2nd Avenue. About in the construction zone coming up. I was on the fire department here for about 10 years. During that 10 years, just about every call, the police department showed up to help us with the call. With some of them, as Mary with the lady earlier said, suicidal, we were backed up, couldn't go in. The police were there, taking care of it, let us come in, do our job. Without them there, we'd probably be still sitting there. It's, I just want to know why we're even bringing this up. Police Department is fantastic in this town. We need them. And I just wanted to let you know my opinion about this situation.
So, next we're going to have a public hearing, and this is available to public comment. And this is the first reading of a rezoning of the I-90 Plaza Edition. It's going from agricultural to general business. Are there any comments on the first note, first reading of this ordinance, 627? And I'm new at this, so you're going to have to give me a little grace on this. So, we just need a motion on this, Brian?
Right, just a motion, second, a normal vote. Give it a second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to rezone the I-90 Plaza Edition from NRC to general business. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Just for the public benefit, you might want to tell them what that is.
Okay. So, NRC would be like agriculture land. So, this is the land over, across from Tailgaters, that big piece of land that is being rezoned. They want to come into the city limits, which we're very happy about, and have a development there, and so they're working through that process. One of the first steps was to get it zoned to general business so they can develop it. So, that sales tax and property tax revenue would come to the city of Brandon, so we're very appreciative of that. The second public hearing is for the first reading of ordinance number 628, rezoning of Aspen Park. So, Aspen Park, as our other parks are zoned agricultural, this NRC classification. Tim, what does that NRC stand for? Natural?
Natural Resources Conservation.
Natural Resources Conservation, okay. And we're moving all of our parks into an institutional class just to get it all consolidated, like City Hall will be institutional, the school buildings, just to standardize things. So, we're making, or this is the first reading of rezoning Aspen Park itself. Is there any public comment on the rezone for Aspen Park? These things first start out at planning and zoning. So, if you see something happening with zoning and you have a question, go to planning and zoning. Tim is our chair, planning and zoning. Chuck is on our planning and zoning committee, and they're the first step in that process. So, I would entertain a motion. Hearing no public comment.
Second.
Okay. So, this again is first reading. There will be a second reading of this ordinance at our next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Chief, we have the fun privilege of welcoming a promotion to our department.
Thank you. Lieutenant Jamie Stoffel, Brandon Police Department, acting as interim chief. Just as is customary, a few words about one of our officers here. Officer Henning was raised in Brandon, graduated from Brandon Valley High School in 2008. After beginning his law enforcement career as a correctional officer and then as a police officer for the city of Flann drew, he was hired by the city of Brandon and joined the Brandon Police Department on June 6, 2016, moving back home to serve the community he grew up in, where he and his wife Katie raised their children. During his time in Brandon, Micah has continually strived to increase his knowledge and training, his passion for law enforcement, willingness to assist the department and community, and dedication are continually noticed. Approximately two years ago, Micah began taking on detective duties while continuing to serve as a patrol officer. Since that time, his work in expanding the department's efforts regarding investigations has been a tremendous success and we look forward to his ability to provide increased services and expertise in this area and the citizens of Brandon. On behalf of the city and the entire police department, I'd like to congratulate Micah Henning for being selected as the first officer to hold the official title of detective in the history of the Brandon Police Department. He is declining public comment.
Oh, Micah! Speech, speech.
Welcome along.
Welcome. Thank you so much. Appreciate your service.
Welcome.
In the audience, could we get him to stand up? Come on, come on. There you go, mom and dad, wife and children. A nice moment for a hometown boy. We're happy you came back.
Oh, thank you, Barb. We need a motion to approve that.
Oh, I guess, okay. Like I said.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second to approve. Micah Henning as our new detective, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're happy to have that. It's always nice to have a celebration. Okay, moving on. I don't think we have anything with the golf course, right? Okay. We have a work report from the Parks Department and some trees. Devon, where's Devon? Devon here? Can you come on up, Devon, and explain what we've got going on with our trees?
Yeah, Devon Coughlin, Parks Superintendent. We tweaked our tree Boulevard species list last year and we kind of wrote it out for a year and decided to make a few more changes. So, we kind of, we tried to eliminate some of the messier trees that we had on the list, you know, we dropped the big seed pods, things like that, while also trying to keep as much diversity as we could in the current list. Some of the main changes are, you know, we kind of, wouldn't list them out quite so individually. You know, there's just a broad oak species, lindens, things like that. One of the main changes, you'll see, we did take off maples as a recommended Boulevard tree. And the reasoning behind that, maples have a very shallow root system, so they're causing a lot of the sidewalk and curb upheavals that you see. They have kind of soft wood. Any big windstorm, usually it's the maples that you see with the broken branches hanging down. And then third reason is the maples have been really overplanted. You know, once the ash board was discovered and started moving through, everybody abandoned ash, started planting maples, and everyone's just afraid that it's going to go the same way. You know, someday, maybe something will come through that really likes to kill off maples and we'll be in the same boat. So, we're not saying you can't plant a maple in your yard, we're just saying we don't recommend it for the Boulevard at this time. We got together with a small group of us to kind of discuss this and then Park Board gave it its approval at our last meeting.
And we do have a tree permit, is that correct?
There is a tree permit, yep. It's been existence for a while. You're supposed to fill out the tree permit anytime you're going to do a Boulevard tree planting. That just allows us to come check your distances, tree species, things like that.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the council? Would we have a motion to change the trees?
Motion to accept this.
Thank you. A motion and a second to accept the change in the trees only for the Boulevard, not for your own personal use in your yard. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Thanks, Devon. Okay, Tammy, you're on for the Aspen Park Road.
This is approval to go out for bids. We are wrapping up final plans right now. We would like We would like to advertise on March 3rd and March 10th with a bid date of March 23rd. And then we would take those bids back to City Council for formal approval on April 5th. And engineers, estimated cost is at that $474,000. And this is to extend that water and sewer on the south side of Aspen Park, as well as do some grading work and put in the gravel road that would eventually connect into our second entrance of Ironwood.
And this is what the gentleman from hockey was talking about?
Yes.
So this would open up the south side of Aspen, because right now, we only have one entrance into Aspen.
Correct.
Okay. Park Board has allocated basically all of their capital improvement budget for the year for this road. It doesn't cover quite all of it, but they're dedicating all of it to the road. They feel it's that important. Any discussion on this, council? Not? I'm going to take a motion. And I will make that motion, as I guess I can, is that correct, as a council member? I represent Park Board, so I will make a motion to put this out for bid. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Posed? All right. We're going to get that going, get that second entrance. I don't know if any of you have ever been out to Aspen Park in a storm. We were out there once with a tornado warning. Difficult to get out of Aspen Park. So it'll be really nice to have that second entrance at some point. Okay, we also have an agreement with Swim America. Christina, can you go through that for us?
Sure. Swim America uses our pool during the time that we're closed, after swim lessons and before the pool opens, they go in there and they utilize that during that time. This is, I think, our third or fourth year with agreement with them. So it's just an agreement for the summer to use of the pool.
Okay. I would again, since I'm on Park Board and have explored this, make the motion for the agreement with Swim America. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. All right, I've asked Chief Dykstra to come tonight and just kind of give us a report on our volunteer fire department chief.
As Barb said, Robert Dykstra, current fire chief of the Brandon Volunteer Fire Department. Monthly report is there in your packet. Just a quick review, 44 calls in the month of January. And I just looked today, we also had 44 calls in February. So we're sitting right at that 44, 45 calls per month. As it states in the report, that averages about one and a half calls per day. Now understandably, we can't have half a call a day, but that's what it averages out. So one thing that I think is interesting, a couple of weeks ago, when we had a high temp of 10 degrees, Brandon Volunteer Fire Department ran seven calls in one day. And that wasn't even a 24-hour period. That was from 9:45 in the morning until 6 o'clock at night. So hats off to our members. Fortunately, we had a few members that were home from work that day and were able to assist with that. But seven calls in nine hours is a pretty good rate. That compares even with some of the Sioux Falls fire stations, I can attest to that. During that time, we also had two calls at the same time. So not only are we stretched thin during the day, being a volunteer department, now we're getting even more stretched and taxed a little bit more when we have two calls at the same time. We have a new fire truck that's on order that was built right here in Brandon by Spartan. We should be taking delivery of that any day now. As the report says, we are up to 30 members, with two members filling out paperwork to join. So we are increasing our membership, and of course, we will always take more, so if anybody's interested, by all means. One thing I did want to mention, in the last couple of years, we've been keeping track of our response time. The current response average, and this is from October 1st through present, or the end of February, from when we get dispatched to when we have a first unit on scene on an emergency call, that's lights and sirens, we're averaging seven minutes, 10 seconds. Now, some people say that's not a very good response time. We're not staffed 24/7. Brandon PD will beat us, MedStar Ambulance will beat us. Both of those are staffed 24/7. That's the time from when our pagers go off, regardless of what we're doing, at work, at home with our kids, at our kid's soccer game, basketball game, wrestling match, whatever, to get to the station. And if it's a fire, to get our fire gear on, on the truck, and to the scene in town. So again, hats off to our members. We have a very good group of dedicated individuals. We're very fortunate. We also, as in the report says, we're looking at doing our, doing our dual piano fundraiser. Unfortunately, they got canceled last year because of the COVID. With the COVID restrictions slowly lifting, we're hoping we can do that again. That's a pretty important fundraiser for us, so. Any questions for me as far as the fire report?
So Chief, I know a lot of our folks live or work in Sioux Falls. And so we have some here in town, but I mean, how do you, how do you get a 7, 7, 10 response time?
Luck is on our side. No, we're very, very fortunate. It just works out. We have some very generous employers in town that allow their employees to go. The city, we have a couple of members that work with the city, and everybody on the cities understand that if they can go, they respond. Spartan, fire truck manufacturer, understands, that's their business. They allow a couple of their employees to respond. There's two or three of us that work at kind of an odd shift, so we're home off work during the day, during those days. So right now, it's working out. But as we grow, it's definitely a concern. We're looking at options. We're always discussing, you know, what ifs, and what can we do to even improve? And looking down the road, we're trying to be proactive as much as possible versus reactive, so.
So I wanted Chief to come tonight, because I just think it's an unknown story, unless maybe you've had them at your home. But these are volunteers that are risking their lives for us, and I want you to know that we, personally, my family appreciates it. You've been at our place, because our daughter was choking, and you were there first. And so I don't, it's really hard to quantify and even express how thankful we are to have you, but I want you, all your volunteers, to know that we appreciate your service.
Thank you, thank you. We're very fortunate here in Brandon. All the agencies work together very well. It's PD, MedStar Ambulance, and the fire department. I think you'd be hard pressed to go to another communities and find a group that works together as well as we do. Talk to any of the officers, talk to any of the firefighters, talk to any of the people on MedStar. We tease and razz each other all day long on calls, and we know each other well enough, and we just kind of have that second nature. We know what they're doing, they know what we're doing, and we're fortunate to have that great working relationship, so.
Chief, what would be the ideal number of volunteers for your department?
We are currently allowed to have 40 for our bylaws. But we can always change that. So if you want to join, we can certainly increase the number to get you on.
Kind of busy on Monday night, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, no, but we're limited at 40 right now, but that can be changed. So the more, the better.
You got it ready, Klaus.
Yeah, if anybody's interested, by all means, contact me, we'll fill out the application and go. So always looking for more bodies, so.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
And you do attend our meetings, and we appreciate that too. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right. So a few months ago, we began the process of putting together a capital improvements plan for the city of Brandon. We as council were instructed to think outside the box and come up with bold ideas. Through this process, we discovered that we have over $200 million in capital needs throughout the city. We also learned that the city's end-of-year cash flow would go from over $300,000 to over $300,000 in debt because of projects and construction and infrastructure needs that we have. In response to this information, the only bold decision this council has made was to vote for raises. This motion is not to get rid of the Brandon Police Department or to defund the police. This motion simply directs the city staff to reach out to Minnehaha County and inquire about police services. When my family owned Sioux Marble, we would receive bids every year for our business insurance. Our agent knew this, and if a better proposal came, he would encourage us to take it. We did not do this because we disliked our agent or thought he was doing a bad job. But we did it because it was good business. Acquire all the information and then make the best decision. Past councils in Brandon, as Barb mentioned earlier, have done this with city engineering, wastewater treatment, ambulance service, and most recently with the golf course. If the council wants to make a decision without having all the information, is that a wise decision? Is that acting as good stewards of our taxpayer dollars? And on a personal note, since longevity seems to be a thing, I have lived in the town for 44 years. Mr. Youngdale, who's sitting in the crowd, was the police chief when I was a kid. A story from my childhood, me and my brother were screwing around one day, and he came to our house. My father instructed him to come scare the crap out of us. So he did. I don't disrespect the Brandon Police Department. But I do think that we as a council have an obligation to ask questions.
Okay, so I guess I first want to back up a minute and talk about communication on this topic, because it was brought up that, you know, there was a lot of anxiety in the community. Social media was brought up. I think a lot of this honestly could have been avoided. And I guess I just want to take a minute and relay my disappointment around how we communicated this. I believe four of the six of us were completely blindsided about this topic when we saw the Thursday evening briefing packet. And then we weren't briefed, because Tim wasn't here. And we also didn't get to see the council agenda request form that is meant to provide that context to the subject. So what happened then, the public sees a one-liner that says, "Explore Minnehaha County to provide law enforcement services." It's very interpretational. I don't think we can expect our residents to understand what that means, what stage we're in. Does that mean we've been contacted by Minnehaha County, and they've asked us to explore a proposal? Does that mean that we have a proposal on the table? I think a lot of this could have been avoided, and I know a couple of us were advocating heavily Friday morning for at least that to be out. And it was almost 24 hours from the time the briefing public packet let this topic get out there, and that letter of context to be out there with it. So I know it wouldn't have stopped all of the passion or anxiety around the topic, but I think it could have gone a long ways. Education is always a win-win. For me on this topic, I am not in favor. I think as a growing community, that we need to be looking towards the future, and I do feel that this would be backtracking. I think it would be an irrevocable change that would, you know, you can't dabble in something like this. You can't say, "Well, we'll try it, and you know, we have a proposal that's going to save us a couple hundred thousand," and then find out you don't like it. You can't, you can't start all over again. And if I thought for a second that we could obtain better protection than we do now, I would absolutely be game to explore it. But our Brandon PD is, I mean, they're the best of the best. I mean, we don't get to a point where we have the reputation of being the safest city because we have a subpar force. We have the best of the best, and I don't understand how you can put a dollar limit on that. Most of these officers live right here. Most of our officers live right here, and they're vested in our community. We can't say the same if we're going to outsource this to the Minnehaha County Sheriff. And I have no doubts that they're great. Everything I've heard about Sheriff Mills' dad is fantastic, but I also Googled him, and it looks like he's been in law enforcement for 50 years. So I don't know how much longer, you know, we would have that fantastic person to work with. I think there's other places that we can look to, to free up funds. I don't think public safety is the place to do that, so I'm a hard no.
I would just like to first thank everyone out here. This is awesome. This is what local government's about, you guys speaking out, whether it was today here or I know all of us have had phone calls, emails, social media. And I just want to applaud our community. I think it's wonderful that you guys are here. I too, I oppose outsourcing the police department to the county. And I'm disappointed that we're even having this discussion tonight. Our officers have dealt with a lot and enough already. They have been underpaid, they lost our police chief that always fought for them. And they currently operate in a substandard police station. So on top of this, we're trying to attempt to hire a new police chief, and then this is the discussion we want to set out there to our officers in our Brandon community. I think we have to realize, we're not a small town anymore. We have over 10,000 residents in a major interstate that runs through our town, and we're home to one of the largest school districts. And we're part of the largest, the largest metro area in South Dakota. Our safety cannot be taken for granted, and we owe our officers, past and present, a debt of gratitude. Frankly, we should be working with our officers for needed reforms. I, for one, would want the police chief position elevated, so he or she would report directly to the mayor and our city council instead of the city administrator. And I would want all department heads afforded the right to speak openly and candidly with the mayor and council. Also, instead of outsourcing our police, let's empower them. Let's have our interim police chief immediately begin working with a realtor and explore leasing opportunities for a PD. I don't think the public realizes what these officers do, because they do love this community. But the resources they have, they don't have an evidence room. They confiscate stuff, they don't have any place to properly and safely handle that. And I think the fundamental role of government is to protect its citizens. As a city, this must be our number one priority. So that's why I oppose it.
For me, it comes down to a simple question. Do you want to save some money and do some other projects, or do you want safety? And for me, it's a no-brainer. Safety for the community is top. It really is. Now, granted, we have millions and millions of dollars of needs in this city. It's been brought up about, you know, a new building for not only the police department, but Public Works and the administration all need one. Our parks need improvement. Aspen Park, I've been harping on the city staff to get Aspen Park Road fixed. We're finally going to get it fixed, I think. Probably not to the best means, but at least it'll be passable now. But back to the police here. I have no doubt that Minnehaha County, their officers are very good. I know a couple personally. They would probably do an adequate job. But would they do a great job like our guys that, for the most part, live here do? I think not. So I am not in favor of even requesting a proposal from the sheriff's department. So I am not in, in favor of even requesting a proposal from, from the sheriff's department.
I don't think it's probably going to be any surprise where I stand on this issue. I had, I had the pleasure of being the police chief of this, of this department for a little over 11 years after Phil chose to retire, and I thoroughly enjoyed my time here. You know, we've heard some discussion about the, about the building. I came from the Sioux Falls Police Department, and we had the state-of-the-art law enforcement center that we had built some, some number of years ago. And so I went from that to what we have here. And what I, what I can tell you is that with that building, it may not be ideal, but the level of police service that we, we give the community is exemplary, has been exemplary. I mean, I'm not bragging here. It wasn't necessarily me, but it was the officers that we have. And I can tell you right now that, right now, with the, the officers that we have, we've got the best crew of officers that you could expect. We've had good officers before. We've got really good officers now, and I would hate to see us move away from that. We've, for a number of years, we've had, we've enjoyed this status of being the designated safest city in the state of South Dakota, and largely because of the people that live here. You know, the police department can't take all the credit, but we definitely can say that the police department does play its part. There are personal relationships that have been formed up because these officers are in town on a regular basis. Like someone pointed out, they know, they know the people that are struggling with mental illness, and they deal with them. And, and they acknowledge that that's not something that these people signed up for. They didn't volunteer to be afflicted such, and they treat them with respect. And I've, I've, I've seen it time and time again. Some of the things that the, the city has expected to provide, you know, and number one and two on my list, number one is not public safety, number two isn't public, it's water and sewer. Those are two very important things, and I put them, one, two, and then closely behind, I put public safety. And over the years, we've, we've made investments in public safety. The fire chief works out of a building at the city of Brandon. Beautiful, beautiful fire department, much better than the, the police department in City Hall. It was a need, it was an investment that was made, and, and I think it's probably paid off. Public safety, MedStar came to us with a request for some money for assistance for, for our contract, and I wasn't sure if he's going to be able to stay in town unless, you know, he had some assistance in that. And in order to attain and keep the rapid response time that we enjoy with MedStar, the city made the investment. I worked with Mike Mills-Stat, Sheriff Mills-Stat, for a number of years on the Sioux Falls PD, and he's a good guy. You know, he is like me, though, he's getting older. I'm not sure how much longer he's going to be the, the sheriff, and we might like the sheriff right now. We may not like the person that replaced him. If we give up command and control of our destiny by going with a contract, and we go, we went with that contract, and we got down the road a little bit, and we had buyer's regret, there is no going back. To build a police department from the ground on up is an extremely daunting task because you start with nothing. You just take a look at the stuff that's on these uniforms that are in here, and that all costs money. The cars cost money, facilities cost money, and then hiring people and getting them up to tank, to, in their training, to get them to the point where they're able to really work on the street takes a long time and takes a lot of money. So once you make this decision, you're stuck with it. You're, there is no going back. It's a one-way street. Brandon is growing. We might be facing some financial challenges right now. I think there are financial challenges that are going to be overcome. We've, you know, we're talking about the I-90 Plaza, and business is growing there. We've got some other opportunities. I know there's been some discussion out on the south end of town down below the racetrack, and there's opportunity there. If we can build our, our sales tax, we're going to be in a lot better shape. And I think we can still meet these challenges and fulfill our, our obligation to provide public safety. And so after that long unplanned speech, obviously, my vote is going to be, I don't see a reason to pursue something that I don't think is going to happen. If we were to vote to say, "Well, okay, let's go ahead and, and take a look and see what the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office would be willing to do this for us," what that would do is put undue strain, I think, on the officers that we have. That, that black cloud, that of uncertainty of, of where are they going to be, what's, what's going to be the final decision. Would it save money? I think, I think we would probably save a little bit of money, but there would be a cost associated with it. And it's a, it's a cost I don't think the, the citizens of this city necessarily want to face. So my vote's going to be no to not even pursue it. I've crunched the numbers. I know we'd save money, but I, I just cannot favor it. I, I do want to add one more thing. We can have these discussions. We've, when it's brought up and it's put on the agenda, we can have these discussions. If nothing else, we've got a whole lot of people here tonight because usually there's one or two chairs that are, are occupied, and, and tonight, we've got a lot more. And I have had a few calls. I should say, I have had a few contacts with people that said we should pursue it, but the vast majority of the people that have emailed me or, or talked to me on the street or called me on my phone have, have said, "We need to keep our own police department." There, now I'm done.
I've got a couple of comments, if you would please.
I'm sorry. It sounded like you were saying something.
Yeah. This was placed on the agenda at the request of two council members. This request did not come from staff. As a matter of fact, when it was discussed with me originally, my recommendation was, "I am not going to contact the county sheriff until I get authorization from the council." So there's been a ton of miscommunication out there about who brought this forward. It was not staff. And the council had this information early Friday afternoon, which you did not share. And I know that some of you have been on social media. You chose not to share that information that you had. So we all share the blame for miscommunication. Social media can be a very potent tool for good and bad. In this case, it was not good. I'm not on social media. I choose that. I think it's a waste of my time. But you, as council members, need to use social media responsibly. And if you need to, we can certainly go through our social media policy, where we, the city, do not communicate on other websites. That is the official policy of the city. Everything was posted well ahead of the council meeting, well within the 24-hour time limit for notification. So I just wanted to make that clear, that we, the staff, did not bring this forward.
No, I'll make that really clear. Staff did not bring this forward. And, you know, I think it's a, it's a positive. Look at all the people here. Lee, you got a whole bunch more people to see your promotion than would typically be here. So that's a real positive. We've heard that our people love our police department, but we have to be able to ask questions, and I know it's particularly painful in this situation because we're dealing with people that we like, they're our friends, they're our neighbors, but we've done the same thing in other areas. It wasn't just this one. I'm sorry it didn't, I'm sorry it caused stress. I mean, I had a lousy weekend, too, let me tell you. So I'm sorry about that, but I would ask a couple of things. I had a young man, and I don't know if he's here, I don't know him, a young man, and I'm really proud of him, I'm going to call his parents, 29-years-old, the only person that called or reached out to me and asked me for the facts. He said, "Barb, what are the facts so I can make an opinion on this?" One person. Everybody else that I was in communication with just took it for granted that what was on social media was accurate, and unfortunately, it wasn't. And so to be dragged through the mud is unfortunate, it's disheartening. We don't sit up here, none of us, for power or glory. We make $5,700 a year. Every week, we have at least one night meeting. Tim and Vicky have children at home. They're taking time away from their families, and all we're trying to do is make Brandon better. And so the two things I would ask the public to do, you don't have to agree with us, I don't, I don't expect that, but sign up for a committee, get involved. I'm glad you're here tonight, I'm glad you spoke up, we needed to hear that, but we need help on committees. We have seats that come open every year for council. The mayor's position is open. Stick your neck out and apply for one of those positions. Before you start typing, get the facts. Call one of us, email us. I don't know how many emails I've answered. I will answer you, but get the facts. And finally, I think we all need a little grace. It's been a long year. You don't know what is happening with the guy or girl next to you. They may be lost a parent, maybe their kid's rebellious, they don't have a job. Give us everyone, let's be better than this. This is why we live in Brandon, because it's a great community. You saw the turnout of people supporting our coaches that are ill, the other cases that people turn out and support our people. Let's give some grace to each other, every, all of us. That is all I ask. And now I'm going to call the question for the motion. All in favor of, Tim, can you read it back again?
All in favor of exploring Minnehaha County to provide law enforcement services.
All in favor of exploring Minnehaha County Sheriff's Services?
Correct.
In, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails. Moving on.
I'll request a roll.
Clark?
Nay.
David?
Nay.
Fish?
I have to think about how it was worded. Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Nay.
Parliament?
Nay.
All right, moving on. Let's move off of that. Enough said. Thank you, police officers. Appreciate it. All right, we have to deal with the resignation of Mayor Lundberg and the calendar of how it's going to work, Brian.
Well, the recommendation or the policy that we followed recently in the last few years, except the resignation, we typically advertise twice in the, in the Brandon Valley Journal.
Please be quiet, we're still conducting a meeting.
If that's, if that's the case, we'd look at March 26th for the deadline of expression of interest forms, meet the candidates. Typically, we do that before briefing meeting on April 1st with potentially the appointment of the candidate on April 5th.
And is this something that we need to make a motion on?
No, no, you do need to accept the mayor's resignation.
Okay.
I'd like to accept it.
A motion to accept the Mayor Lundberg's resignation effective immediately, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will move on with that schedule. Anyone that's interested in applying for that position, the forms are down at City Hall.
They're, they're on the website as well.
Oh, they're on the website?
Yeah. I'll put something on the news and announcements to link that.
You know, I'm not very technology-driven.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, they're on the website. All right. Resolution 421. Oh, that's the little...
That's the lift station annexation of the lift station property in the Brandon 90 Plaza property. We own the lift station, and we didn't petition for it to be annexed into the city limits at the same time that the entire property did.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second to annex that little, I don't know how much land that is, but a little piece of land for our lift station, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, mending wages. So we redid the wage schedule. Again, I don't know if that's what you call it.
Correct.
Okay, wage schedule. And this is the amended proposal.
Correct. This is all of the wages and salaries for all of the full-time employees based upon the city council's input at the last council meeting with the new wage structure.
So...
Motion approved.
Okay, a motion in a second to approve the adjusted wage schedule, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Do you want to do a roll call? Are we okay?
Yes, I can do that.
I think, just for an order, I think you have to when you have a dissenting vote.
Do you?
I think so.
No, you don't, you don't have to. If, if somebody wants to call for a, okay, you can.
Okay. All right. This is the listing of the capital projects that are needing to be worked on. And this is just a draft, correct?
Correct. This is a draft based upon the CIP work sessions that the council staff have had over the last three or four months, five months. This only, it's a five-year CIP plan, it's out through 2026. The projects that we would be, that were included in the plan are shown in the, in the annual columns. So primarily concentrating with input from the council on core area reconstruction, Rushmore, the infrastructure, sewer, water, streets in the core area and Rushmore, as well as potentially, we've got the extension of Ironwood. Big Sioux Drainage is a, is a storm sewer pipe that runs from Part View down to the Big Sioux River through, great, or...
Big Sioux Ret.
Big Sioux Ret, thank you. That is in dire need of repair. We've got a lift station at the pool that needs to be upgraded. The water treatment plant is included in that with the expansion, hopefully with construction to start there in 2022. We've got a couple of things out there that will be developer-driven, Bethany Sewer Main as well as the sewer main to the west side of town. We've got a Forest Main to Sioux Falls that's included in there that needs to, we need to add another one as we grow. What am I missing? Exit 406 is in the works, and that's scheduled for construction in 2025 through 2027.
Exit 406, 2023.
2023. And we have not seen the final plans from DOT on that yet, so we are anticipating that we will have some costs with that renovation of the exit. And then we've got hanging out there Redwood Boulevard and Chestnut. We're not quite sure if and when that's going to happen, but that's really going to be dictated by the new elementary school as well as residential development.
I, I didn't realize, when I was looking at this earlier, I, there's nothing in there for parks and the golf course, and I don't think that we can go five years without making improvements in our park system or the golf course, so that is a concern for me at this time.
And that's, that's why we brought it in as a draft. So if you want to, we can certainly delay. We were looking at doing the, the adoption of this at the next meeting, but we can certainly schedule a few more CIP work sessions if the council would like, and we can move back to Monday night work sessions if you would like.
I can't squeeze the blood out of a turnip. I don't, I don't know.
Well, at our, at our briefing meeting, it was proposed that we pay down some debt, and I'm not saying that that's not a good idea, but I think I want to look at some of the alternatives one more time. So personally, I wouldn't mind one more CIP at least to give us a chance to evaluate some of these projects, just, you know, just give it one more cursory look at least.
Sure.
You want to do it the next time we have a council meeting, or...
Or, you want to do it, uh...
Next Monday?
Next Monday?
Oh.
Yeah, I might have...
So personally, I wouldn't mind one more CIP at least to give us a chance to evaluate some of these projects. Just give it one more cursory look at least.
Sure.
You want to do it the next time we have a council meeting?
Or you want to do it next Monday?
Yeah, I might have to call in on that one.
Okay, well, if that's the case, we should probably wait till...
Briefing, maybe? Next briefing? Or is that P&amp;Z? It's P&amp;Z, I think.
I think we have P&amp;Z. No, should be fine.
We got an extra week, don't we? Don't we have a week off? Okay, I think that's a good idea, Jack.
But I just want to clarify, Brian, so this is, even though we're going to do another one, this is just the draft. And even when we do make it, it's meant to be a working document.
Correct.
So even though that we might have something, my understanding, council will look at this at least every year, if not twice a year, and update and make an adjust as accordingly, right?
Correct.
So none of this is set in stone, so I don't want the citizens to be like, what? Because these numbers could change, these projects can change, everything depending.
At this point in time, this is the priority set by the council for the next five years. That's quite a while. So we all know that other things are going to come up between now and five years from now. So it's just a matter of then sitting down with the council and say, where do you want to put it? And which projects are going to be delayed? So, no, we'll review it every year.
So when will the next CIP be then?
That's...
Sounds like briefing.
Yeah.
On March 11th.
11th.
On the 11th, right? At what time?
Probably do the briefing meeting first at 5:30 and then go into a CIP session after that.
Okay, thank you. I do want to thank staff about that CIP. I know you guys put an immense amount of work into it. It's been very helpful, very eye-opening, unfortunately. But it is what it is. All right, VFW raffle on page 68.
Once again, it's, if you are opposed to it, you need to pass a resolution that you're opposed to it, otherwise, there's no action necessary.
Anybody have any concerns with the gun raffle for the VFW?
Nope.
All right, moving on to the work report. And then we have the Corson Railroad Crossing quote, which is what Chuck and Yannick were addressing earlier.
I would move to approve that.
I think we have to, you have to clarify which proposal.
The Sokeup one?
Yeah.
Where you're doing the base bid.
Base bid. One of the alternatives.
Base bid, yes.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Contract for the Sokeup for the reconstruction, or I guess, yeah, reconstruction of the railroad crossing at Corson. Repair, thank you. So they don't have to have so many bumps across. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Chuck, let's get that done. We've been working on that for two years.
Just as a refresher, that's a contract between the city of Brandon and Sokeup Construction. We do have an agreement with Brandon Township, it's their road, but we will do the work. We'll pay for it, and then we'll take the donations from Chuck.
Okay. Thanks, Chuck. Geotech contract for the Rushmore area. Tammy?
Yep, this is for the reconstruction project that will take place this summer in the Rushmore area. And this is just materials testing. It's pretty standard, what we do on all of our construction projects.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving along. Change order.
This is the final change order that just zeros out the quantities for the final pay app for the sewer project that we completed late last year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and the pay application, final pay application. What do we got there, Tammy?
The final pay application for the sewer project. It is under the original contract amount, and if you notice, there is some liquidated damages that were charged that the contractor did pay for.
Good.
They did pay for it, you said?
Yep.
Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, getting through all that. Need something, Jack?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Is there any new business to come before the council? No one called executive session, so would entertain a motion for adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are done at 7:35. Thank you all for coming.